Do we have it on the website, Alissa?
Yes.
They put it on the website.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
There you go.
I've called to order this special meeting of the Boone County Industrial Development Agency of August 4th, 2021. Like to offer to the public an opportunity to speak as any matter, actually, and I think it is an any matter concerning the idea, right, Joe? And you obviously be committed to speak for five minutes. Would anybody like to speak?
Sure, I would. You want me to rise or just stay here?
If you're welcome to sit there if you wish, you can stand up.
Just giving some time in between coronaries, you know? The agenda was posted, I guess it went out to the media a week ago, and then it was posted on the, or the notification on the media, but I don't think the agenda was there. So that's what brings me out here. Every time there's a special meeting and no agenda, that tells me that there's potential crookery in the air. Now, in this revitalization that county executive Jason Garner talked about that was going to save the mall, everybody knew what was coming, that it was going to be a piecemeal cannibalization of the mall. Now, $10 million of tax money is at stake. I was in a project, I just had to be in a project yesterday, very similar project, that is already failing, already failing. I noticed on the map you have proposed medical, proposed manufacturing, propose this, propose that. This is a hodgepodge, this is not reality. This is $10 million to one of the richest families in the area who have bankrupted more businesses than they have created. That's their track record. If you go back to the original press releases when Sears was bought, they said essentially that no further tax breaks would be sought. Well, that's for that section. Now we're into this section. This is an absolute travesty, this is an absolute speculation. What we're doing is providing $10 million in instantaneous equity to a project that wouldn't fly otherwise. You are taking a Mississippi Riverboat gambling approach. You are enriching a family that does not need to be enriched. Their character is in question, their operations have been in question. I remember in downtown Binghamton, and the mayor of Binghamton is here. There was a big project, the Madco Technology Center. The Madco, it was a body shop, and it was going to be a state-of-the-art job-creating facility. Well, what happened to that? What happened to that? There it is, it's the lease to a mental health facility now. You know, if you look at the promises that these families made to the area and the promises that were kept, you only have to look at all those empty buildings in IBM Endicott, where they went bust with that reincarnation of IBM that was supposed to go. Family's been responsible, hundreds of millions of dollars worth of bad debts in bankruptcy. They have no shame, and you don't have no shame. If you have a memory, if you have a memory, then you seek out people of high character. That's what it is, trust, the three Cs of credit. This is $10 million, this is a scam, this is a travesty, this is a joke. Enough said.
Would anybody else like to speak at this public comment session? With all this section to the fore. We have to force a resolution item number three. Resolution authorizing a sale leaseback or a lease-leaseback transaction to facilitate the financing, renovation, and equipping of the Oakdale Mall located at 601, 635 Harriel Drive in the Village of Johnson City, Town of Lehman, Broom County, New York, and appointing Spark JC LLC, the company, as agent of the agency for the purpose of financing, renovation, and equipping the project, and authorizing the execution and delivery of certain documents with respect thereto, including a payment and load tax agreement deviating from the agency's uniform tax exemption policy, and a sales and use tax exemption benefit in an amount not to exceed $3,93,333 to provide a mortgage tax exemption in an amount not to exceed $933,234, and a real property tax exemption in an amount not to exceed $7,732,421.36. Stacy, I'll turn it over to you to introduce this, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So the purpose of today's meeting is for consideration and application from Spark JC LLC as before the board today for consideration of acceptance, or in other words, moving the application to study and represent governance committee discussion and public hearing. The application from Spark is related to the acquisition and redevelopment of the Oakdale Mall from Realto Capital. Where's Doug Matthews? He's here today to answer questions following my project review. Like many malls, the future of the Oakdale Mall has been uncertain for many years, with the property going into foreclosure and ultimately ownership taken by Realto Capital in 2020. Over the past four years, I've had the opportunity to have conversations with Realto on the importance of this strategic asset in the community and developing a comprehensive redevelopment strategy that would benefit the community at large. And I have been greatly appreciative of their forthrightness and understanding of the community's position. And at the same time, Doug Matthews, one of the owner, the owner of the former Sears building, which now houses Factory by Beer Tree, Broom County Office of Employment and Training, and the Lourdes Health and Wellness Facility to be opened in 2022, has developed and shared concepts for a vision for the future of the mall. Oakdale Commons, as he will speak about in a little bit, is a plan for mixed-use development that includes healthcare, retail, and technology under one roof. Spark JC is in ongoing conversations and for the purposes made for days of potential tenants, we're going to call them tenants at this time. Part of this project could include expansion and retention of a prominent technology company and retention of several jobs in our community. For the purposes of today's consideration, I will acknowledge there are still several big parts to the project, as one would expect with the redevelopment of a, of a underutilized mall. Currently, total project costs are estimated to be, to be about 105, 116 million, as has been outlined in your application. Spark JC is in conversation with the Park City Development and others about potential grant funding and tax credit programs for the benefit of this project. The project will include significant renovations to the existing footprint of the building, including the need for exterior roof improvements and some significant stormwater infrastructure improvements, to name the few. This is to accommodate more of the redevelopment and overall growth of the facility. At this point, there is no expectation of demodding and the deferent space, but a reconfigure of, the reconfiguration of the space is likely to occur. The project also includes the acquisition of the Macy's property and the Keating property located on the mall site. JC Penney Building is owned wholly by JC Penneys and thus pays taxes separately, but Spark JC would become the owner of the land. The pilot proposals for a 28-year deviated pilot includes five-year tax freeze at the front end of the project and an increase of roughly 6.25% per year. The pilot proposal was included in your packet as well as a cost-benefit analysis provided by staff. There is one important thing to note, projects such as this, where there is a landlord-tenant structure, we track direct jobs created by the project and not the indirect jobs. However, I would not, as in compliance with our Paris reporting for New York State. However, I would not want to discount the significance of the indirect jobs that could be realized through this project, which should include, as I mentioned, core retention of several hundred local jobs, as well as the potential for new investment in healthcare facilities and retail. The pilot proposal was approved by the Village of Johnson City on July 27. As I know there are other questions on this project, and our recommendation to the board is to accept the application to enable staff to set up a records and government meeting and address questions prior to consideration of the mall. I'm going to be answering questions, and as I mentioned, I'd like to offer the opportunity for Doug Matthews to say.
Are there any initial questions, Stacy? All we do. Give us a, give us an interview. Doug, Stacy.
Nice job. Thanks, everybody, for being here. As you know, we did what I call Phase One, which was the Beer Tree building, Lourdes Pavilion. That should open next year, March of '23, or March of '22. Thankfully, Lourdes stayed with us through COVID, really challenging. And that Wellness Center has been really well received. I think they've already signed up over 1,500 people. Beer Tree's in and operating, do all their brewing there. They had to put a big deck outside, which is beautiful. And of course, the county's there. And I think when we finish, we estimate 500 jobs inside the building. And they're getting tons of business. Anyone that's been there knows that you can go there most nights, you're waiting an hour, two hours to get into the beer. So I think it's been a very successful project. And it's, it was very challenging because, you know, some of the alternatives, it sat empty for several years. Some of the alternatives were, were, could be uses that would take an office actual. And we felt, and I kind of had an eye on the mall at that time because I knew its neighborhood, that if that building went and went sort of dark, that it would fail the common on the main mall. We felt this would be critical asset for our community. But we, we were lucky we got it, and I think like, like I said, part of next year, it should be fully operational, you know, two of the three tenants are in and operating. Really well received. So for probably several years, I've been pursuing the mall. And it's been a lot of work. I know Stacy and her team have been talking to them as well. And it had to work to our benefit that there was a lawsuit on the tax that goes back to 2016. Because if it wasn't for that, most of these malls are flipped to be bottom feeders nationwide. They're taking close in two weeks, as it is where it is. And, and they normally just, they don't repurpose or redevelop the mall, they kind of take them for what they can get, pull as much cash as they can get out, they prefer a lot of things. But we didn't think that would be a good for our community. Realto was good sport about it. Really, prior to 2020, they felt they were in the neighborhood because lawsuits go back to 2016. That's where the mall then, Macy's was at in 2019, that they were looking at 10 to 12 million. And that was before they shut the mall down in 2020. I felt that if we could negotiate a deal with the seller, being Realto down in Miami, and all the municipalities, because this was important, that it could really help advance our, our case to buy this mall and get this and do something productive. And I think Realto was really good about it. They didn't want to bankrupt local communities. And though they thought they were due, this was before 2020, you know, because you're looking at one and a half million a year tax, that they would probably be doing 10 to 12 million. But now we're thinking, you know, that's probably 15% of the million. Current day, we got a settlement for six and a half million for the municipalities with Realto. And that settles up the closing with us. So I think it was a huge win for the municipalities, Broom County, Town of Union, the Village of Johnson City, and the school. And I think all of them were very much in favor. I think they had appraisals that were done. This was well below those appraisals in terms of where they thought their settlement would have to be. So that was a big victory, but it comes to the price that we have to also buy the mall at the same time. So we're under contract by the mall, we control the, you know, the mall at this point. We've been pursuing tenants. We've been pursuing everybody out there to try and see what we can do. This isn't just a local sort of, this is happening nationwide, where malls are being, you know, are pulled, these are being turned over everywhere to lenders. And what we're seeing in terms of successful outcome is public and private partnerships, where they get together and realize that there's underlying issue and that to try to make this, these assets that have been vacated, something productive, you have to work together. And that's what we've looked at here. And, you know, we've got storm sewer issues. West Side's storm sewer loan is five to seven million dollars to replace over 50 years old. You can see when we get a big rainfall, it floods, it's a problem. So for us to attract any tenants, we need infrastructure improvements. And that's why we're looking for some funding, some partnerships, some help here. Because before we can even get to talking about the tenants that are possible in here, we have to have our infrastructure updated and under the code. We don't have leaks all over in the roof, you don't have storm sewers, sanitary sewer issue. Some of the, we've made real progress in attracting tenants. We've got a, what we label here as a manufacturing and technology center. And they go to their board tomorrow to seek approval for this location. And it's based on what we're representing in this pilot and some other benefits that we can get by all working together. When they come in here and if we renovate this, they'll fill five football fields of space. And I think it's a huge win for our, our community. They also are owned 75% by a fortunate company. So we've got someone that has credit behind them, and that really helps us drive a project like this forward. We've got, where we saw from proposed retail, again, we're not disclosing anything because not only the folks we're talking to want it to be proposed, but we're well advanced in these talks. We've got two, we're down to two tenants in that proposed retail. And then what happens here, this sort of repurposing, and you can see we say live, work, wellness, and play. We kind of envision this, this community that we formed here with a lot of jobs, a lot of activity, but one of those folks, you know, they do want to walk at lunch and be able to get something to eat, maybe go get their groceries. The wagons across the street, we've got some information. They're typically top three or number one, all the way into the chain. And that really helps us to market this as a regional center. A lot of the folks that come to Wagons come out of Pennsylvania, which is really nice to draw that into New York. And we think the same thing will happen when we're at this repurposed, refinished asset, the Oakdale Mall, which is now we're tentatively leaving Oakdale Mall. So you see those proposed retail, those outcars in the front. We've got letters of intent, three different ones that are national chains, that would really help. This manufacturing and technology company is looking here and says, hey, it's very important to us that our folks can walk at lunch, that they can, whether it's winter and the rain marks or summer and outdoors, that they can go get something to eat. They have 500 employees, so it's a real, you know, and they continue to grow. So just between here and here, we have 1,000 employees that we're adding to this mall. Proposed medical, again, we're farther down the line, the medical user. I think that they're talking about things like an AM search center, an imaging center. These are big assets again to our community, so people, if they need, we have another COVID outbreak, they don't have to go to the hospital, they can come here and have simple procedures done. And imaging is, is, again, at the high-end, you know, state-of-the-art imaging. I think, again, that's a real benefit to our community. So the retail, we would keep that component, we'd kind of slide it down and, and certainly look for others to participate. A lot of what you see in the mall today are local, what they call license agreements. And these are folks that come in, they pay $6,000 to be here, and utility taxes, maintenance, everything. So you can see it, I think they've done a good job of keeping it appear to be open, but it's a lot of smoke in here. There's not a lot of revenue that we generate here that can support this, this big of a structure. So we're really excited. We've got a good team together that has loads of experience. We've been in this community 60 years. My father started with Macro Electric, and he built it to the fifth-largest electrical contractor in the country. I think he did a great job in following IBM down into the Carolina. We've been involved in a ton of business. We brought hockey here. We brought, again, when the baseball team was going to come here and the budget was way out of line, several groups together to team up, and they knocked $3 million off the construction costs and were able to put up the now Met Stadium, or I guess Wembley, or whatever. But, so, and they wanted to own it, but he had been some sports ownership, he knew it was very challenging and very exciting. We had a lot of businesses in here, and some failed, of course they failed. But we always, at the beginning of the game, we worked, started out, started life, and criticized, you know? So I think our family's been here 60 years, we continue to be here. And I think this is a very important project for our community. It's a regional project, and, and I think it will be a great, probably going to be three to five years to finish it. There's a lot of work to be done when you consider the size and scope here. It's a challenging time, construction costs have failed nationwide. That makes it more difficult to get tenants to pull a budget. But we, as I said, we're well along with the key tenants that we feel can revitalize this area. We're not talking about people we market for, we're talking about people we've talked for months and months. And that we're really close to the finish line. I think I've covered it, maybe in a nutshell, Stacy, anything else? Ask me any questions you want, we're here for it.
I think obviously talk to next start, in fact, which is also tangible to sell, to pick up how it is to come. And reviewing the application under the fund finances, which is $23 million in equity listed, if you break that out with the sources that are, or will be, the project.
I mean, we're fully committed to invest in this project. I've been working on it for two years, and we've got hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars already invested just in where we are today. We've got a lot of staff working on this all the time. Working with you guys, working with everybody, able to trade a lot of time and resources to do that. But we intend, I think, we'll have to come up with a cash at closing. We're, we're tentatively slated to close at the end of September. And some of these things that you guys are considering, key items, closure, because it's like cart and a horse. Everyone's saying, all right, we'll come, but you guys have to tie. Or do you have any funding to help with the infrastructure? You know, storms will gather on the west side. Is that good? And we say, well, they want to know that we have sense. Or tenants want to know that the public entity is committed. So it's the cart and the horse, and we're trying to keep everybody moving, but we don't know, you know, we've talked to several things. Everybody's interested in it, and we've talked to it. We don't have to finish sort of letters of intent in terms of commitment letters and what they're going to expect us to do or put up. But the group I have, you know, I think is committed to invest in this project. I don't have an exact rate on what that equity will be, but it'll be whatever is required. You know, we're investing already, we'll continue to invest, yes. I don't think there'll be any lending included in the closing process.
Because you have 90, what, 92 million in bank financing, right? And then 22 million equity, right? Well, what you're saying, closing, you know, mostly equity.
Yeah, I don't know, because they could ask for more or less. I don't know, a lot of times the ratio can go 70 to 85% in terms of what they're lending. And they're asking also, what, what are these guys, what's this going to cost? What, you know? So we've got everything that's sort of proposed, and I don't have the exact dollars, but I just can tell you, we're committed to doing this. I think the people that we have, the people are committed to doing this. And we have no problem in the equity. Anything we've ever done is an equity.
Right. Do you anticipate a possibility that 22 million in additional bank financing, is that a possibility? Do you need it, or are you going to do investment?
I think the way costs are going, I mean, that, that number may go up, depending on the needs, if they go down. I don't have that in my head, but we're going to bridge whatever we have to bridge. And we have to be up to the lender with what they ask and what they require, certainly we put up, that is, this is the best.
Because right now, the budget is based on the spend, I mean, the cost for doing what you're proposing is 160 million. And yet, to the funding, including 22 million equity, the balance is far. So, so the key is the equity, the equity flush rate that you're expecting.
Sure, sure. But I'm saying, whatever they require, and I just don't, I don't want to give you that.
So is a 22 million estimate at this point in time?
All of it, because I can tell you, the construction prices are changing daily. And anyone that's involved anywhere here know, nationwide, I don't know what they think on inflation, but we're seeing that everything and really, it's a question. But we're, you know, we're here, we're committed to do it, as is the cost of the time. They play a part as well, but.
So we approved that the application was publicly accepted. And then the public hearing, the public hearing was scheduled.
Public hearing, also, that's on the date, on the 18th.
The public hearing, you proposed it.
Public hearing, based on our calendars, the targets, the founders, who we, around, you, I'm guessing, specifically the founders, who we, during the meeting. At our meeting on 18th, government, government, we can get in.
Well, it's like the fire, because your closing went on mall, end of September, end of September. So this is kind of the chicken and eggs in the area, as it says. Because we would be approving the pilot, which we would have, I know, the budget would still be in flux back then.
Our, our technology company, the reason we asked for this to be expedited with respect to here. Their board meeting's tomorrow, and I'm looking from this area, reassuring that some of the things we've represented are in place. They don't want to present to the board without knowing that these are, are factors that are going to be the take. So it is the chicken and egg. We don't know, you know, I'm trying to keep, I've been doing it for several years, trying to keep all these pieces moving forward. And I think we have a great opportunity to do that. But there's competition, there's other states that are in play, and it's not an idle threat. These are people that are already operating in another state, and, and, you know, they're very attractive. Anyone that's a manufacturer or a technology company, stats usually say that every one of those jobs creates three of them. So I think it's really important that we show that we're unified and that we have this package ready for the end. We're the conduit, it comes through us to these folks. And they can, you know, the benefit isn't to us, other than we get to do this project, we make it greater. But these are the folks that are going to use some of the programs we're talking about, where they benefit. And it, it's a stick to them.
So when you anticipate that maybe the pilot is.
I'm hoping tomorrow.
Maybe they do, they have their decision now.
I, I hope they're getting, looking for a resolution from the board, that, and they're, they're presenting. I hope we got the board, you guys, the pilot program, the funding we were talking about, to help with the infrastructure cost. Because if not, the price is not on the margin, we don't care.
So today, accepting the application is a sign of, of support, for lack of a better word.
Exactly. It's showing them that, so far, we're, you know, we kind of are the middle man in all this. And we're between you guys and the public entities, the tenants that we're talking to. But we're the ones, and they're, they're, you're kind of facing some of your decision of what we're representing about these folks. They're doing the same. So everybody, you know, is kind of waiting to see.
Well, technically, by our next meeting, we could have more information, if questions are a little better.
Yeah, and, and the person pointing that, I did have a conversation with the representative company, they did ask them that. I've heard that this has noted in our UTEP, that it does get down to these kinds of structures, where you have a landlord and tenant, that benefit goes to the tenant, so it does help with restructuring, their financial performance. So, but I do agree, I think that between now and then, we can have some, I think, privacy.
Someone has a question. So you, you rooted to Grant's one question. How long? On it, how, um, how wheels that even, that, I mean, was the timeline on that?
It's as real as the pilot we're talking about, I mean, we have, we have representation from, uh, others, you know, public entity. Similar to what the agency is representing on the pilot. We're trying to get all those to advance enough, so we can tell these folks, this is what are the, these are the global commitments so far. And here's when we plan on, you know, there's a public hearing for this, and then a final vote. And we hope that everyone's in support of it. And I can't guarantee, which tomorrow, that they, or ask, I, I don't know.
Oh, I understand that.
But it's, we're trying to get, we're trying to get them all the way, all the people with the board and say, this community is committed to us being here. They value us, here's what they bought, but we've gotta work through all the paperwork, everybody, to get the final sign from the back.
And I suppose, projects like this are maybe, we reached out to the parents itself very early in the process. And community members, across the week. Uh, I certainly can't say one hundred percent certainty, I can tell you they're very interested in this project. Uh, what we've seen historically, if the decides to get a combination, some kind of capital improvement grant that might come with, uh, just building. Serial or the insurance or some combination there, uh, they're also very interested in talking to the operating company. Because for that, if it is a flag, this is something, something certain, that they're interested for what program they like to be in on. That is, like, I think that's a characteristic of the program. Which helps them, so I, I, I would feel confident to say that they'll be, and support it all, but I just don't know.
And I can tell the rich guests on these, and what's happening nationwide, you guys have looked at, like, Great Northern Mall, off North of Syracuse. It's just like, uh, like a ghost town. Further it gets along, with the excellence, the harder it is to bring it back. And I think, we still have some, some sort of good retailers that we can include in this, and, and, uh, we've got some folks that are team up. I hope we can close on. But, if, if we lose, let's say we don't get them, you guys have to do this, uh, you know. The real, the real danger becomes things like this tax, let's say it goes to twelve to fifteen, or six and a half. That's a huge hit to our area, you know, I think we've done a great job. And I think Realco has been a really good sort of, you know, seller in these days, of being reasonable on this sale. Because when you look at what the taxes are here, they didn't step them down at all, you know. When you know the anchor after anchor is taxing here, even early to the zero, we occupy the first escape. That, you know, it's obvious where we are headed, and, uh, what the tax is doing. So, we have big exposure units on the taxes, on this sell, or this lawsuit that goes back to two thousand. Uh, you know, now we're in two thousand and twenty-one, soon to be two thousand and twenty-two. This litigation's still going, it hasn't, hasn't settled till we close on the mall.
Sure, so Doug, I got a question, so, this, in a project like this, do the taxes become a part of the common area expense, if you know? You know what I'm saying, so?
In their pro rate of share?
Yeah, yeah.
It'll be, we, when we calculate the, uh, common area, which would be this corridor.
Yeah.
But we're maintaining this corridor, even though these folks are on both sides of it. Because we said, you know, we wanna keep a walking area for the general public. We want people to have the ability to come in and get to the back for clinical services. It's gonna be a pharmacy back here, it's gonna be walk-in care. Uh, so we want people to be able to come in and get up, we put an elevator here in St. Luke. But, that pro rate of share will be based on the actual leasehold, but not the total.
So I guess my question is, if there's a hundred dollar pilot benefit, okay? Does that pass through to the tenants?
Absolutely.
So, so it is like a common area expense, sure?
Yes, yeah.
And that's what I, that's what I'm getting at.
There's no benefit to us, whatever that is.
That's true, yeah. So that's why they have, I'm trying to figure out what their interest in the pilot is, their interest is, because if there is a pilot. And their share of the tax bill is fifty percent, and the pilot is seventy, a hundred dollars, then they're gonna get a benefit of fifty bucks.
Exactly.
Okay, so that's true, there is.
Exactly.
Okay.
So that part becomes part of the pilot.
Okay.
That's a great question, though, because two of the primary units that we're talking about, historically, would pay no taxes, or very little tax.
Okay, I got it.
Manufacturing, distributing all over worldwide, it's competing.
Okay.
And medical, normally there's actually.
Okay, one other question, so I was looking at the tax settlement, it answered the question here on page five, question six. Says, yes, settlement of tax proceedings with current owner for six point five million. Balance is seven point five, will be paid by the applicant. So you're saying this Realco's paying the six point five, and Spark is paying another seven?
The disability pays. That's the tax, that count, it goes from two thousand, yeah.
Okay, that's the refund, okay. And then it said, seven point five will be paid by applicant.
That's the acquisition.
Oh, got it, thank you.
And I'm saying, Joe, that that six and a half, I think would be a win for our area.
Right.
Well, exactly, so it's a, if, if we lose the deal, and it goes back, and we often consider lots of people important. And I think it's really a problem.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Other questions?
I have one.
Yes.
So, I'll fit out, and constructing of the spaces, that'll be handled through Jeff, Amherst Park.
Whoever that G C is, right. But, that'll be using Spark, we'll do one of two ways, if, if they can get any sort of funding. Then we'll use that funding, they'll cost that, for the rents lower, and it makes for better. Like I say, this is five football fields, it's a big, big footprint, and I think it's a big win for our company. We have a lot of prospects in New York, in New York area, that are looking for that size. But yes, they will, that'll be, either if we're paying it, we have to build it into the rest. If, if they get it, we reuse the construction, but we hope to be doing the construction.
Or if they were to do the construction themselves, would they have to adhere to the labor policy?
Any benefit is very.
Somebody did that construction themselves, Doug, that, that one sixteen that was floated out there, would that come down? And?
Yeah.
The number?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question, the one sixteen is well figuring the total budget to get. So if they get.
Is it their money, or your money, or?
Exactly, it's all, that's what we think, to be the total target. It's just whose pocket it's not, or whose pocket.
It's not over and above the one?
No, no.
So, yeah, one more question, um, Mr. Turner, does, is the Sears building, does that become a part of this pilot? Oh, it doesn't, it's still seven.
That's a separate deal.
It's still seven, okay.
And, and as you remember, thank you, you guys made a part of these things, act like, um, you know, we came here once. And I called it down, and like I say, I think we're very lucky that what we proposed actually happened. And the three tenants are here, because we went through a really challenging time. And I give Lourdes a ton of credit, and certainly an advocate for that, they put up a hundred and five million dollars a year in charity to care in our community. And that's, many folks in our community use them to provide here, they go to D E R, that's what they get from our protection. Lourdes doesn't turn them away, they treat them. Imagine starting to perform on any given year with a hundred and five million dollars in the hole. That's how critical, you know, Lourdes is, not just to this project, and the fact that they're here, and they wanna do this well in this program. Possibly, because you have medical staff to help you with underlying condition. If I go in here, and I have MS with diabetes, I have a team that helped me design my program, because maybe hot water. So, it's, you know, they're a great tenant here, I'm so happy they committed and stayed with it. Because, as you know, hospitals really had a rough year and a half for our end. Other questions, board members?
This is a sort of a combination question, comment, and I'm, I'm mindful of the fact that today, we, we, you know, we'll act. Uh, vote on accepting the application, and assuming that happens, we then have a hearing, we'll get the support and initial information. So the, the context here is, there is, um, a very important tenant to the plan. Um, they're looking for some cost certain pieces, so they can compare the opportunity here to what else they may have. Uh, and we wanna be able to be competitive. Uh, and in order to do so, there is a request that would be before us to provide a significant debt, in form of TV. So the benefit, um, we would be, uh, trying to obtain by, uh, by, uh, if we would approve that benefit, is that. Uh, and so, some of the questions that, now at least I'll have as a board member, is, alright, um. How confident can we be in our capacity to realize that benefit, right? What are, what are the escape actions, if any, what are we gonna know about it? We'll know, hopefully, more at that point, and to the extent that there is risk to us that we don't get the benefit. Um, then how do we think about that in terms of the conditions? Right, I mean, I, I think that's something we have to wrestle. You know, obviously, the more information we have at our disposal, the easier it is to go through that.
Sure, and that's, uh, you know, yeah, a very good point, you guys have always been very good points here. But it is the, you know, chicken and the egg, because without it, we don't get anywhere. And without it, I can tell you, there's no project. So, it's, you know, we're trying to, and again, I appreciate you guys taking the time off, especially me. Because it kind of snuck up on all of us, that we have a board meeting, and we need to know what you're gonna do. Um, I get that, yeah, other people try to, it's in the, in the business. So, you know, I intend, and I think our team intends, hopefully, to go through with it, listen to whatever shape it forms, it may stop the break. I really hope to get them, and we need this, get them, but we need this to get anywhere. Or, you know, to make, these are, these are ancient, and it's really hard to repurpose them. And, uh, everyone wants to be of their retail, want to be in a platform. And, uh, even other tenants don't wanna be involved, of our, they have great, you know, street visibility and exposure. So, we're doing the best we can here, we're not, we're not, all we can do is drive, we're in the game, giving our best shot. I think we're making real effort. And it's collaborative, obviously, I have a case study, I brought it nationwide, this is going on everywhere. The only place to, you know, move anything forward, is Public Private Department.
Is there a chance that these numbers are going to change significantly, now in the eighteen? The agency's fee was brought up, that on the paper, still?
Um, I, I, at this point, I'm, I'm, we're looking at how they, um, they, um, they've done the margin, so, uh.
But you're still pursuing other grants possibly with infrastructure?
We're, I mean, we're pursuing, in every avenue we need to, we have, and we're being pushed by the folks that are, you know, considering, I mean. And, the challenge is, you know, if it, we, a lot of times we become, uh, money closer. And may ultimately, if we get commitments, and, uh, maybe those commitments instead of going to a direct. But ultimately, for the same use, to help cut the cost of repurposing this mall, getting finished things. Taking care of infrastructure, you got storm sewers that come through here, they don't service this property, they service everything miles above it. But we just happen to be the property they grow to, way back when, in the seventies. They agreed to take the west side, the village against the east side. And, and then you've got sanitary, which is that stuff. So it's, got a lot of underground, all the lights are real, the bases are real. Anyone drives around here, sees the parking, and all the asphalt, it's, it's cracked, coming up. Um, so it's, it's a big, uh, project, exactly, but I do think it's critical for our community. I think we've got great momentum with some of the folks that are talking to us.
But if grants, if grants were out there, some of that funding, take care of stormwater, or sanitary, or something else, do the bill, do the state, or somehow. Uh, you wouldn't be borrowing as much lending as the future, and same with equity, equity would come down also. The maximum is that one sixteen, that's taken into account for that, right?
But most importantly, David, is the cost to these folks.
Yeah.
We're the best, you know, we've gotta recruit, we've gotta be spent somehow, some ways. We'll look for long-term, certain years, twenty years, I mean, that they have as an initial term. So, that's a big commitment to our community. But we're not there yet, all we're doing is representing, here's a pilot, being considered. Here's maybe other sources of funding that may be considered, here's what we're looking at, now here's a pilot. Here's a tax settlement, put all those pieces together, and here's our book, we go forward, but it's, you know, it's three of them. Big run. Sure. Waiting patient, prisoners, uh, it's a great concept for a very important asset to create. And the ones who are here today, we're accepting the application, that grant. Because, while, you know, some of you became as well as they, and so on, then, you don't really have, in my mind, even remotely put a picture with capital stress for the flights. Which implies what the term of the pilot should be, I think that there's a couple of footnotes in the pilot that are problematic, that you need to address. In terms of transport building, the pilot, et cetera, so. Guess, from my perspective, maybe I'll point Brian, I'm okay to accept it. But I want to be clear, there are a whole lot of questions that you need to answer, to answer in more detail. That's in what I think is best, only actually.
And so, yeah, we've decided, yes, we're not interested in, uh, nothing. Thank you, now, pause.
You can also just. Yes, we, I'm happy to present, give as many questions outlined as possible. So if Doug asks, she's truly impressed those, we will be ready by the public hearing, obviously. Will the governors be ready to proceed to the public hearing?
You know, really, I can be, I can be, yeah.
Well, you know, my partner, Jim, is, is, I think, I guess, the best way, I mean, to get as much information as possible. Obviously, knowing what happens tomorrow will be key. I mean, if there's any other information, we can have, whenever, I just want to, if we said there's some question, we need to be answered.
We've historically, those, have our governments, can be more than day.
Uh, but. But it may make sense, we, we can talk about it, maybe because of the nature of this application, we may want more time to discuss it in greater detail. Maybe have a separate governance committee meeting on a separate day, I would think might work. And that way, um, we may be better prepared, well, with, with the whole board, um, so we can look at it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I would recommend that, given the timeline between today's meeting and our regular board meeting is, because we have to know this on hearing. There's only gonna be about today, my friend, on the hearing, to regulate. So I would likely recommend you guys, to, 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 together, um, prior to, that was.
Right, yeah, I think the key is all, given, the developers might have time to answer some of these questions. But if we have a governance committee, let's say there's still some question mark, then we learn, and we, uh, for ourselves.
I suggest we get as many of them on the team as possible. We're looking at the public hearing for six. Upon, on, and I'm ready to hear you. Eight, so that will give you seventeen.
Yeah, right, yes. I think, we, we, you can, uh, continue on the subject, I think, yeah. Yeah, I think, I'll just, I think reiterating, is just putting some meat behind the figures of equity and bank financing. You know, breaking out of definite, the banks, and equity, whether that looks like. Um, so I, I agree with Jim, except for today, I guess my question was answered live at special meeting. Uh, and that was answered because of the, the cloud, certainly validates my reiterating special. So, you know, I'm looking for either contact. Right, so they want to know that pretending you're committing things. Right, there's a signal that they're open to that.
Just, are there other questions, right?
Yeah, so I mean, just one is an internal question and a question for the applicant, you know, in response to your invitation and suggestion that we could get stuff to the table. Internally, first of all, just want to understand the calendar. I know what today is, okay, I'm good today. So then we would have a hearing and we've got a tenth day. So the earliest date we can have the hearing is the sixteenth. And then our meeting would be the eighteenth. And then we're talking about having a governance meeting on some day other than the eighteenth. So we have time to, you know, work through it without feeling like, oh, the clock on us, that the meeting starts in, you know, twenty minutes. And, and so, and it feels like the governance meeting doesn't have to await a public hearing date, right? So that could be before this. Okay, just wanted to understand the calendar. Yeah, so, you know, you know, and, and and to the applicant then, I mean, just to be more explicit about my earlier remarks. So, you know, we're positing a pilot that deviates from its standard pilot, that, you know, in the timeframe that we're on is related to a very important tenant. So we want to get the tenant if we're going to extend benefits. And so what happens if, you know, the tenant chooses somebody else? Whether they choose somebody else, you know, tomorrow or a month from now? What happens if somebody else, what happens if the tenant, for reasons that we can anticipate today, you know, something goes off the tracks, you know, in December? And so, you know, then we accelerated our consideration of the substantial benefit and we didn't get the profits. And so what are our opportunities at that point to know how, you know, how firm is the lease? You know, I would want to know what the terms of the lease were, if there were, right? What are their escape hatchets, what are their options to get out, so I can make some judging on the risk?
All the questions, I don't think we have.
Understood.
We're doing our best, you know? It's a real challenge, all you got to do is drive around and look at it, see what, basically. And, you know, we're doing our best, I can tell you, without it, nothing.
Understood.
And without it, all the municipalities that were fully approached, not that possible, that goes forward, and I don't know where it ends up.
Your point is also part of the calculus.
So it's, you know, all I can tell you is we're doing our best, trying to make something happen. We've been working on it nonstop. I've been on it personally for over two years, trying to get them to even consider us, you know, and not flip it to somebody else, like an outsider. Anyone I have involved is local and long-term residents of our community. You know, we want to do something profitable, not something that feels like we're, you know, getting whatever we can from whatever. I don't have all the answers, all I'm doing is sharing, we do everything I have.
I have some questions where we've had tenants, you know, in order to start to work with the tenants that they gave. And, you know, what we typically do is give a group and by that, ultimately, our goal is to have a necessary, necessary.
That's that experience. Understood. That experience is certainly in the forefront of my mind as I ask the question. Hey, so the, and the other question I would have, again, we don't need to answer it today, but we sort of put you on notice. Twenty-eight years, all right, lease terms usually aren't that long, so why the delta between the two?
Well, we're anticipating five years of construction purposes. That's a lot of work. And I've heard people, you know, ask and be concerned, like, you know, what we've said is, if we add space, let's say we found something, we can go right here. We take that spare space, we just hop in wherever that's in our pilot. And a lot of times, that's not good, we're selling it off or trying to get some other entity. For financing purposes, we need to do that. We need to take this into stand law, or whatever bank comes in and lends us money to do this, isn't in danger of really hurt, I don't think that's someone has first position. So it's, you know, I don't know, like I say, again, I don't have all the answers, although what if? I just know where we're at today. I feel we're in a good position. I think we're starting to get here. I think we're very lucky in this position today because of some factors outside of all of our control, in terms of federal stimulus, funding, you know, where we're at. And also that's the upside to the COVID downside, you know, so. But all I can do is give it our best shot. And I can tell you that we really hope to start to do it. Those, you know, say this here, you know, those tenants, anyone that does this, three are closing down, which nobody can ever anticipate or control. That can get anybody, who would have thought in our area? So all we can do is give them a great reason to be there. I can give you a great reason. They have a strong owner and all, that'd be fine for them to come.
But what do you see if what we did in January is September 30th?
Tennis.
So, you know, there's a pilot, you have to be in place, you have to be in place, we get the call.
Yeah, we're not closing.
And so then, okay, so my best, I'm thinking is hypothetically, by the eighteenth, you know, they're still in, pushing, pushing, pushing.
We can call for suspension.
Yeah, right. I just, but that's, obviously, that's, that's, I don't know, shit, he was.
Well, and I think, and I think ultimately, you guys, I would, which makes it possible to repurpose it, even if you lost this opportunity. Not getting guaranteed on it, so I feel really far along with it, we designed space, but really off about the profit. But do you want us involved, or do you want it to go, because I can tell you what will happen, that Boston will put forward, maybe they sell on six months a year, whatever, forward. It's going to be expensive to municipal. And then they'll flip it to somebody who, if they have cash, probably reach the different public end and propose in two weeks, and that's what we're going to do with it.
You wouldn't, sorry. You wouldn't withdraw the application if that board of directors tomorrow had a negative response to it?
No, no, if you guys do it, we'll walk, most likely, I would say, we'll move along.
Yeah, but that, that other board tomorrow, if they decide to go elsewhere, you're still going to try to move forward with some other tenant somehow, some way?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I feel we can do as good a job as anybody, because we're here, we know all the local players.
Wouldn't be discouraged for a few days, but she'll get back up and keep helping.
We'll be the first to that. Be trying.
A hundred and sixteen obviously includes, a hundred and sixteen million obviously includes build out for that tenant. How much, how much, how much is there? How much is a hundred and sixteen to seventeen?
Oh, I think we're having, what we did is we took portions, pro-ret, we can't discuss it. I want to say forty million, forty-two million.
It's a hundred and fifty thousand of the build out, which is that.
They write this in that, it'll be anywhere from thirty-one to thirty-seven. It's massive. I hate to, it's a great opportunity, but I don't want to put like all our anything in there, but we're going to be pursuing everybody. If we get this thing, obviously, we want to. And if we get a curve ball tomorrow, I think we both, you know, leadership is behind it. But they have outside board members, they're outnumbered by the group that owns seventy-five percent. So who knows what their agenda is, but I'm really hoping they trust the folks that they have on this company.
Where's the corporate headquarters?
I'm just, I'm not, I'm not.
We'll tell it one way or the other after the decision.
Yeah. Okay, and I think. With you guys and the same, we try to be transparent.
Maybe they're false, though.
I have no comment.
Reason to come. With that in mind, is there a motion to accept the application and to call for a public hearing?
Make the motions.
In a second, in a second. We'll have a vote, all those in the sky.
I agree.
And opposed, or extension, or witnesses, a couple of your members? Thank you. Are we going into executive session, Stacy?
I don't have any evidence.
I can, uh?
You just got to figure out a timeframe for the governance, right?
Yeah, just gradually speaking, yeah, I'm going to look at your motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you, Mayor, is there a second? Thank you, Joe, I'm looking right at you. All the favorites in the eye, thank you, everybody.